Okay, good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, and this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council. I now call to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding. Also present are council members Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, Joel Aspiro. Is John with us? John is with us this evening. John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Grove. I will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Want to thank everyone for coming and participating tonight. I see we have two young audience girls. Thank you for coming to the council meeting tonight. It's good to see you here. Let's start with announcements. Staff, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a couple of announcements tonight. First, Amanda, we've got an announcement on school zones and some upcoming funding updates.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, council members and mayor. A quick update regarding our recently installed school zone signs. We ensured that we were able to get the 15 mile an hour signs up before school started. However, that was just to clarify, an interim solution until we could procure and install flashing signs that are only in effect when flashing. So we have proceeded with purchasing locations on division. So in front of the high school as well as in front of Farman's, we're going to be switching those over in early October. Hopefully, our materials arrive on time and get those functioning so that it will only be 15 miles an hour when flashing. And then we'll roll out the other locations throughout town as we're able to procure those materials. We wanted to start with division to ensure that the signs function as intended, make sure we have a good manufacturer, and then proceed with the other sign. So just an update in that regard.
And Amanda, could you reiterate what locations those will be specifically?
All of the school zone locations?
Yeah.
There are 22, and I'm sorry, I don't have them all on my top of my head. There are 22 signs, yes, but it is all of our primary school locations. So we especially target, and our highest priority is the locations that are on arterials and collectors. So for example, on Pine Street, Division and Boyer, those will be our priorities. I will say in our conversations with Chief Kuhn, he couldn't be here this evening to participate in the update, but he did want to make sure that you are aware, we are seeing a significant reduction in speeds, especially compared to our prior 20 mile an hour zone. So he's been really pleased with the effectiveness and the enforcement associated with that. But yeah, after Division, we'll go to Pine Street and then off to Boyer, and then we'll go ahead and install in those other locations.
Thank you. Any other announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, second announcement, Dan Tadic, our city engineer, and he's got a quick update on some completed paving projects. And that was, in particular, our recent project was, we were looking to get wrapped up before school started.
Thank you. Good evening. As Jennifer mentioned, just want to provide a quick update on fiscal year 21, street and sidewalk projects. We just completed, actually Monday evening, late paving on North Boyer. This is from Schweitzer Cut Off to just past Jenny Lane. This is a full depth, full section of asphalt removal replacement. We're anticipating the striping of that happening either later this week or early next week. As part of that effort, we also extended the asphalt a little bit to seal intention crack that exists in the North Boyer roadway surface. We'll get into that a little later when we talk about that agenda item. We also recently completed Spruce Street paving. This is between Division and just shy of Hickory Glen. That again was a full removal and replacement of the asphalt section. Associated with that, we were also able to complete some ADA improvements on some existing noncompliant ramps that were in the project corridor. So just a quick summary of the overall fiscal year 21, street sidewalk expenditures in progress. Spruce Street design and reconstruction, again, about 1,500 feet total. That was approximately $200,000. And just caveat on all these costs, we're still waiting on final numbers, but these are pretty close. The design and reconstruction of the North Boyer Road, again, from Schweitzer Cut Off to just past Jenny Lane, which was partially funded by Grant Building Idaho's Future, that will come in right around $175,000. The investigation and moving into design of the emergency repairs on North Boyer, around $40,000. We also completed survey for reconstruction of Jefferson, Hickory, and Ruth Avenue, portions of each of those. That project, we were intending to pave those out this year. However, that project also required a water main replacement on Ruth Avenue. We bid out that project and received zero bids in return. I think it's just reflecting the current construction climate. Contractors are very busy. And we're anticipating rebidding that one next year and following up with the paving of those streets next year. Likewise, we also had the Pine Street Sidewalk Project. This, for those who may not recall, this was new sidewalk along the north side of Pine between Boyer and Division. That project was also bid and received zero bids. We're also anticipating that project being rebid and completed next year. So in total, this is roughly, I think, $490,000, just under $500,000 in improvements, so.
All right, thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Anything else?
Yeah, our final update, Mr. Mayor, is related to a project that will start next week along Farman's Landing and Gunning's Alley thereon. First, we have had conversations over about the last 18 months about a project to underground overhead utility lines running there on, running there on Sand Creek. And so this is going to be a two-phase project. The project that starts next week will be the first phase, and what will be happening in that phase is Avista will be installing a new junction box and doing some trenching. That will start this coming Monday at 9:00 AM, and work will continue through Friday at 3:00 PM. And during that time, access to that, that Farman's Landing area via Gunning's Alley will be on Bridge Street and not there along, kind of where the fish arch is and that access point next to the Panetta Theater. So anyone looking, any of our businesses, any deliveries, access point will be there off of Bridge Street. This will also be accompanied by a power outage while they, they are making some shifts in source of power for some of the buildings. And that will be Wednesday, September 22nd. The power outage will start at 10:00 AM and will last until Thursday at 3:00 AM, so overnight, to limit impacts of businesses. That power outage is going to run along First Street from Cedar Street to Bridge Street approximately. So we will be getting all of our announcements out about this tomorrow. All the information just came in from Avista. And so this will be the first phase, and as we move throughout this fall into winter, the undergrounding of all the overhead lines will be occurring, so.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Jennifer, you said 10:00 AM. Did you mean?
10:00 PM.
Okay, just to clarify that for the public.
10:00 PM to 3:00 AM.
Thank you.
On Wednesday. Yeah.
Right. Any announcements from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I would like to shout out to Austin, who I believe works in our Parks and Rec Department. I was informed today that somebody was struggling to get their very large cabin cruiser out of our takeout at the city beach because their winch worked for part of the time and quit on them, and Austin jumped into action, got his waiters on, got some come-alongs, ended up getting pretty wet from what I understand, but did a great job to help one of our very long-term residents here in Sandpoint get their boat safely out of the water and winter. So I don't know that they always get the praise that they deserve. So they work really hard out there. And then my other thought would be if Melissa could just pull up our case status for COVID. And if you can scroll over to the last bar. So yesterday, we had our second highest day ever in Bonner County with 67. So I don't know that we are changing that much. Our highest day was 79. That's that other lump on there. We had 97 people at Cootney Medical yesterday, and this morning they updated that to 105. And I would like to shout out to all of our healthcare workers who don't get to live their daily lives like all the rest of us go on and seemingly are relatively unaffected. These people are not, both at Bonner General and at KMC. I would not like to work nine, 12-hour shifts in a row because I was just going to relieve my fellow coworkers. And there are many more stories like that out there. So I would just like to thank, from the deepest part of my heart, all those people that are working extra hard during this time. And again, encourage everybody to get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements from council? Okay. We'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. This is not the time to speak on specific items listed on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on such an item, please wait until we announce that item during the regular meeting. To accommodate both those who wish to speak on general terms during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we'll give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Before we proceed with the public forum, I will take just a moment to recite the rules and procedure for public comment during Sandpoint City Council meetings, both during public forum and during other opportunities for public comment during the meeting. So please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please, note if you're attending by Zoom, you'll need a working microphone in order to participate. You'll need to use the raise your hand option if you'd like to be called upon to speak. When your name is called, you'll see a prompt on your screen to unmute. You'll need to press or click the unmute button in order to be heard. For those participating here in person, if you wish to speak, you'll need to complete a signup form that looks like this up at the front table there, and please hand it to the clerk in the front of the room. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed in the individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to mayor or council or staff, and do not approach the dais. If you have any materials for council, please hand them to the clerk at the front. And again, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. So our first speaker this evening is Janine Shepherd. Please come to the podium. Thank you.
Hi, Janine Shepherd, Bonner County. I wanted to take my time tonight to pray for you guys, pray for the meeting as we open. So as I was praying about what to say tonight, the Lord impressed upon me to talk about love, and it seemed like such a strange topic to me, but as I went along, it really made sense to me. So if you'd like to, I would love it if you would join me in prayer. So let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this time to come to you and put you at the forefront of all that's done tonight. 1 Corinthians 13, 4 through 8 says, "If I speak in the tongues of men or angels, but do not have love, I am only a resounding gong or a clanging symbol. If I have the gift of prophecy and can fathom all the mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have faith that can move mountains, but I have not love, I am nothing. If I give all I possess to the poor and give over my body to hardship, that I may boast, but do not have love, I gain nothing. Love is patient. Love is kind. It does not envy. It does not boast. It is not proud. It does not dishonor others. It is not self-seeking. It is not easily angered. It keeps no record of wrongs. Love does not delight in evil, but rejoices with the truth. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, always perseveres. Love never fails." It goes on to say, "And now these three remain, faith, hope, and love, but the greatest of these is love. Lord, I know of your great love for every person in this room. I know that it's your will that all come to know you. I ask that you surround each year with your love and watch care, helping them to move closer to you tonight. You are the lover of our souls, and we thank you for the work that will be done in this place tonight. Help us all to glorify you, and we ask that you are in the forefront of all the decisions made tonight. Let love be the driving force in all that's done. In Jesus' name. Amen." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Particularly fond of that prayer. Thank you. Next up, John Wilson.
All right. So my name is John Wilson. I'm Bonner County resident. I'm going to speak on the mile an hour change from 20 to 15. I made up some packets so you guys can go through it, but it's all kind of based on what we have. Okay, so the city of Sandpoint states that their policy for changing traffic decisions is based on the manual of uniform traffic control devices and professional engineering practices and judgment. In that manual, it states the decision to use a particular device at a particular location should be made on the basis of either an engineering study or the application of engineering judgment. Further along in that same manual, it states reduce speed limit signs for school areas and crossings are included in this manual solely for the purpose of standardizing signings for these zones and not as an endorsement of mandatory reduced speed zones. Not long ago, the city put out a press release. It said, "This reduced speed limit from 20 miles an hour to 15 miles an hour in school zones was one of the key recommendations that came out of the safety audit." The audit report noted that a 10 mile an hour reduction in speed is the engineering standard for school zones. So I think it's, this is important, I hope it's important for the council to understand is that what came out with the press release from the city is not actually what the audit says. This is what the audit says. The audit says, "The law enforcement representative on the RSA team noted that a minor reduction in speed limit at broad times, the school speeds limit, in effect, has resulted in low compliance." So it's an anecdotal, the police chief, who was the police person on this committee, said that that's what he felt, not backed up by any data. Then, at the end of it, it says the recommendation, the recommendation says, "To increase compliance in school zone speed limit, the RSA team," this was, by the way, approved by the city council, "recommends adding flashing lights to the school zone speed reduction signs. The flashing lights should be there automatically scheduled or manually activated by the crossing guard." The RSA team also recommends that the school zone speed limit reduction should only be active during school opening and closing peak periods when students are likely to be present. And that says that if those things don't work, then we lower the speed limit to 15 miles an hour. So I think it's very deceitful for the city to put out a press release that says that this change was being done based on the, it was a key part when it wasn't even a recommendation. It was, the recommendation was to do this, and then if this didn't work, to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
And then.
Mr. Wilson, that's three minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, would you have a member of the public online who would like to speak?
Okay. We'll come to them. We still have one person in the room. I'd like to recognize Rebecca Holland.
Good evening. My name's Rebecca Holland. I am a Bonner County resident. I served on the Bike Ped Committee for, I think, close to eight years and chaired it five. I see that tonight's agenda is filled with a lot of requests for proposals for developments. And the reason I came tonight is I just want to remind all of you that you were elected to represent the established people that are here. What is going on? I'm not specifically looking at any of these that are on tonight's agenda, but I know that things are getting teed up for what we call Farman's Landing. The 1% tax is tied into that. You know my beef with how we lost the whole bike lane and nothing established, zero established beyond that. That wasn't for the people, the established people in this town. There's well over 1,000 kids, elementary kids, that really have no way to make their way safely through downtown core. That still remains. And with the teeing up for the rezoning, I attended the PNC meeting recently, the last one, and what I saw on the screen with the ideas, I know, I sat through many meetings in Bike Ped, and we talked about it. It was sold for the good and purpose of it being an infrastructure or, what do you want, for stormwater, which is good to protect the creek. We have to do that. But it was also to be a bike lane. It was also to be an improvement down there for the established people. That's who you represent, not the developers. And big money's coming in here, and we know it's bookmarked on both sides now, the town. And we don't want to be, as I said at the PNC meeting, we don't want to be another Aspen. We know friends. We know people that were there. A lot of people left. This is, you know, this is the people that are established, just who you should be, you are representing. Those are the people that voted you in, not the big money interests that are coming in. So I'm just here to put that out because in the next couple of weeks, we see this thing being very fast-tracked from the 1% to the zone changes to, let's not have the vegetation, or we got to watch out for that word, to what are we going to do all the way up to Popsicle Bridge, to, oh, we got to have a zone change because, oh, we've just created a situation. You know, there's boardwalks down there. There was approval on those. Don't tell me that we can't continue to make nice improvements for our community and at the same time, not sell out to the big money. I bet my three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Appreciate that.
Your time.
Madam Clerk? We have someone who wants to participate online?
Molly O'Reilly.
Mayor Ronstadt, City Council. I am here to point out that the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the city of Sandpoint would have met today had it been on its schedule when staff suspended its meetings in November 2018. We commented on developments. We made them more pedestrian bicycle friendly. We worked on bike routes around the city. We worked on standards for bicycle parking. We helped the city get grants. We were a really important part of the city for 14 years, but then our meetings were canceled just as planning started for the urban area transportation plan. You will undoubtedly hear from staff that there was bicycle pedestrian input, but I'm here to tell you as a citizen that it wasn't adequate. So anyway, I hope you will reinstate the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Reilly. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who would like to participate remotely?
Sherry Caldwell, would you like to speak? Please raise your hand if you would. Go ahead.
I didn't really want to speak. I would rather. Okay, can you hear me now?
Again, and Ms. Caldwell, if you could please state for the record whether or not you reside within the city?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I live actually on the far end of Cedar, and obviously, with the change in the school speed zones, there has been an increased amount of congestion. And I feel like it's a little unsafe, especially trying to cross Division. If you're on a motorcycle, a bicycle, or a car, it doesn't matter what conveyance it is. It's just, if you're especially in a lower-profile position, it's harder to see because cars are backed up now, and you can't see the opposite lane. Yeah, and I just worry that it's going to get much worse as, you know, the time changes. So are you planning on doing any sort of impact study to see if there is an increase in amount of accidents? And is there a way to maybe keep the school zone the way it is at the limit that it's at while better managing the congestion for us?
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Appreciate those comments. Madam Clerk?
I don't see anyone else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, that concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $2,281,964 and 58 cents, reflecting $1,514,833.91 for regular payables and $767,130.67 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I do want to recognize Kenan Perry and thank him for his continued service on Sandpoint Urban New York Agency, and I thank the council for appointing him for another term on the Urban New York Agency. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilman Sprow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item on the public hearing, the next, I'm sorry, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing and decision regarding a request for approval of the Boyer Meadows subdivision preliminary plan. The developer for this project was inadvertently misidentified on the agenda. So I'd like to clarify that this request is from Big Creek Land Company. They are seeking preliminary approval of a 21-monot subdivision totaling approximately 8.52 acres, bounded by private property to the north, private property to the west, East Mountain View Drive to the south, and North Boyer Avenue to the east. On August 17th, 2021, the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, followed by a vote, with the majority of the commissioners present recommending to city council approval with conditions. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee on August 24th, 2021. The order and procedure for a public hearing will be as follows. First, explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Second, presentation by the applicant. Please note that any questions should be addressed to the applicant at that time. Third, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Questions should be asked of those testifying at that time. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows. Those in favor first, those neutral second, and those opposed last. The fourth order, the fourth procedure in order is the applicant's rebuttal testimony, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Fifth, closing the public hearing. And then last, council will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing. The public hearing has been closed, with questions directed only to city staff during deliberation. Before we proceed any further, I would like to ask for confirmation from each counselor, please, that you have had no ex parte contact or conflict of interest as pertains to this request. All right, seeing none, we will proceed. So interim city planner Darren Fluke will provide a presentation for us and answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sharing my screen.
Sharing my screen. I'm going to get it in presentation mode here. And are we seeing the screen okay?
Yeah.
Excellent. So we're here tonight to hear the application for Boyer Meadows subdivision, which is a preliminary plat. As the mayor mentioned, it is located on the west side of North Boyer and north of Mountain View Drive, as is indicated here on the slide. The applicant is the Big Creek Land Company and they are represented by Jeremy Grimm. The council has seen this this graphic many times. Just understand that tonight, when hearing a preliminary plat, we're here to ensure compliance with the comprehensive plan or consistency with the comprehensive plan. In addition to compliance with the other adopted plans such as the multimodal transportation plan and urban area transportation plan, as well as the zoning and subdivision ordinances. Tonight, and you've seen this graphic many times as well, the preliminary plat is heard tonight. This is the public's opportunity to weigh in on the proposed subdivision. When you get to the final plat stage on the right-hand side of this graphic, and you'll see one of these later tonight, those are not public hearings and we'll talk about much more about that later on. As the mayor also stated, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this application on September or August 17. I have it as September 17, there should be 8/17. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with conditions and we'll go through those as well. So the application consists of approximately eight and a half acres. They are proposing 21 buildable lots, 20 of those lots are single-family residential lots that range approximately from 6,700 square feet up to approximately 8,200 square feet in size. The Western Most Lot, which is Lot 1, indicated there on the left of your screen, will be for future development within the industrial zoning designation within the city. As far as the comprehensive plan goes, you can see the site outlined in red here. The majority of the site, approximately three quarters, is designated as industrial. And the remaining one quarter land area situated in the southeast corner of the site is designated as context area four. The verbiage that you see there on the left-hand side of this slide does come directly from the comprehensive plan. With regard to zoning, currently the east half of the site is zoned, single-family residential indicated there in white, with the west half of the site designated as industrial technical park. As you will note from your staff report, the council did hear an application back in 2019 to rezone the property. It was all previously zoned industrial technical park and there was an application to rezone the the eastern half to residential single-family and that was approved. You will note, however, that the comprehensive plan map was not amended, as was indicated in the previous slide. So we do have that minor technical discrepancy in between what the comprehensive plan, future land use map designated and what the property is now currently zoned. So with regard to the plat itself, this is what it looks like. All access will be off a new local street oriented in north-south direction, providing access to Mountain View Drive. All of the lots, as proposed, contain the minimum lot area as required by the code for the RS zone. That is, they're 5,000 square feet or larger and they all have the minimum frontage of 50, 50 linear feet, sorry. You'll notice that this is configured as a dead-end cul-de-sac and that is generally discouraged by the comprehensive plan as well as the ordinance. In this case, staff recommended and the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with a condition of approval that would require a pedestrian and bicycle connection roughly located here between lots five and six on Block 1, which would provide non-motorized access to North Boyer Avenue from the new local street here. This is a bit of a compromise for us and in this case, the staff was persuaded that there were not other good opportunities for connectivity in the neighborhood. The land use pattern is relatively set and stable. And really, this is probably the best we're going to do as far as redevelopment of the property and connectivity with other surrounding properties. And that really is all I had prepared for you this evening. As the mayor went through, this will be your your procedures for this evening's hearings, which you're well aware of. At this time, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It isn't that I have any questions, but I really appreciate the way that the report was prepared with the analysis of the comprehensive plan so that when people say, well, it's against the comprehensive plan, I can tell them, no, it's discouraged, but it's not against the comprehensive plan. So I really appreciate that added information because you may not know this, but I'm not a planner. And so I really appreciate getting all the information I can, so thank you.
Okay. We will now, if there's no further questions, we'll now proceed to the public hearing. I'm sorry. Applicant, Jeremy, would you like to give us your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Jeremy Grimm, owner of Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting, former planning director for the City of Sandpoint from 2007 to 2015. And I'm here today to help Big Creek Land Company and Cliff Mort walk through the preliminary plat application. First and foremost, you know, there is a flurry of activity and development in the community and in the region right now. Of course, everyone's aware of that. I think we're lucky to have Cliff here. Cliff is not a out-of-state developer, although he does have tremendous development experience in many states. He's probably the most experienced developer that I've ever worked with. Cliff's grandmother was born over in Clark Fork in a in a Granger or Ranger station. I'm not quite clear which, but Cliff is local as professional developers get. So he'll be up here in just a minute to talk about his product and sort of some of the constraints and challenges that he faces as he's trying to develop in the community and elsewhere. So as staff mentioned, we are looking to develop approximately eight and a half acres zone residential, single-family and half-zoned industrial technology park. If you're not familiar or anyone in the audience or online isn't familiar, this is looking northwest where the site is located at 2205 North Boyer. There's a former residence on the site. Or there was. It's in the process of being removed. What we're looking at here is 4.26 acres on the east side. It's a mentioned zone residential, single-family and about the same on the west side. There are no current plans for development on the west side. See what the market conditions dictate and what interested parties there are in the future. 21 lots, as staff mentioned, they range in size from about 6,700 square feet to a little over 8,000 square feet. And the site is very consistent with the characteristic of other development in the in the area. It's, you can see Moon Ridge subdivision there on the east side of Boyer. Again, similar sized lots, similar side road configuration. And of course, most of you are aware that this site is in central Sandpoint and located in proximity to the most robust trail system that we have, that multimodal pathway that connects down into the commercial zone and it's well located for job creation and services and a variety of other benefits with employers to the west and to the south. I want to take a moment here to let Cliff just speak briefly about some of the product and development that he's experienced and has experience with. And when he's done, I'll get back up and and one of the reasons we're here tonight at this hearing is because we do have a couple of requests, one of which is to ask you to reconsider one of the conditions of approval. Although we're pleased with the recommendation and the finding of facts of the planning commission, there is a condition that we would like to ask you for some reconsideration. So before we get into that, though, I want to introduce Cliff Mort, for those of you don't know him, and let Cliff tell his story.
Hello. Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Cliff Mort. I reside actually in Post Falls, but I'm up here as a resident part-time as well. I've been in the development industry and home building industry for 36 years now in about six different states and we developed a lot of master plan communities and so forth, not only in the region here, but we have a division in Tri-Cities as well and have worked in a number of different states. But as of late, we've been, we actually, in the last five years, we started a division up here. We had tried to do that a number of years ago and just had not ever found the right entry point into the market. We do a lot of developing down in Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls and Rathrum and our main corporate office is in Riverstone. Some of you are familiar with that. The the tasks that I've been really working on as of late or the last few years is as we came into the market, really was looking at affordability. And, you know, we do a lot of different types of homes, a lot of different price points in in other markets. And, you know, all the way from multimillion-dollar estates to, you know, first-time buyer product. And I've never seen a time in history where it's been more difficult to to do that. And I know, you know, it's the number one thing in the newspapers, it's the number one thing locally. I know there's task force that I'm on with Mr. Mayor here and and so forth, just looking at, you know, what can we do? And so one of the things that that we've been doing, we've been trying to put together a project in Sandpoint for probably three years now. We've built on some of the infill lots. And then really, we've had to go outside of Sandpoint proper. The the photos on the screen are a neighborhood in Ponderay that we're we're actually currently working in. And those are homes that, you know, are typical in a lot of our neighborhoods. Most of those homes that you see on the screen, all but maybe one of them that I'm looking on now, and I don't I don't think even the one would be able to be built on a lot in Sandpoint. Mainly because of the current structure of ordinances and so forth, where the width of the home has to be the the same as as the garage itself. So if we have a two-car garage, which most people don't want to live without a two-car garage these days, unless they're in an old part of the of Sandpoint and in other neighborhoods. But in most new neighborhoods, you're looking at an attached two-car garage, which is at a minimum of 20 feet. Most of the time, they like it as much as 24. So you start getting real wide in your in your footprints. And one of the things I'd I'd like council to look at in the future and obviously we're not asking special treatment for this one, but I bring it up just because this particular neighborhood will will be able to do some of those homes, but we won't be able to do all of them. But really, and that's a good shot of that, Jeremy, you know, most, most of the the homes, when you try to do something that wide, you have to go to a wider lot. So if you're looking at a 50-foot lot, in most cases, a 40-foot plan really changes the dynamics of how that plan has to be designed and so forth. So it it really does change it up and it really makes it more difficult from an affordability standpoint. But anyway, that's another topic for another day. But with this particular neighborhood, I think one of, probably the only thing that that we'd request for you, and I think Jeremy's gonna gonna bring that up here in a minute, but it has to do more with the, you know, and again, these these two homes probably wouldn't be able to fit in there either, you know, the affordable housing that you see on the screen. The the particular neighborhood, it's it's really only one way to to design this one out. It's small, real small neighborhood, 20 lots essentially. The the one that is the the industrial lot, that's just something that we'll work on later. Not sure exactly what will go on there, but the cul-de-sac itself, you know, again, not a whole lot of ways to lay this out just with road design and size of lots and things that you can do, you know, and still meet the intent of the zone. But in in a mid-block of a cul-de-sac, and I understand connectivity very well. We've done lots and lots of development and I understand the reasons why. But I think in a little neighborhood like this, you know, people buy in a cul-de-sac because it's secure. It's, you know, families, whether it's retirees, whomever, they they like to buy in a cul-de-sac because it is one way in and one way out. And, you know, in this day and age, I think it is a, it's a safer environment. Certainly, loop streets or straight streets, you know, have a lot more tendency to to be raceways. In this particular one where you're you're taking a mid-block and creating an entry point onto a busy street, Boyer, I just don't think it's really the right thing to do. Not only does it create more cost, so if we're looking at just affordability, I mean, that one thing probably adds, you know, $3,000 to the cost of a house in here. But also just the that connectivity, when you're talking a cul-de-sac that's less than 600 feet long, to have a mid-block entry point, I just think it's senseless. So I would request you to really take a look at that and consider a request to remove that from the requirements. We're fine with all the balance of the requirements. I think you'll see a real nice neighborhood here and and, you know, we'll make sure that we do the right thing. So with that, I'll let Jeremy finish his presentation and unless you have questions of me, and I'll I'll be here as well.
Yeah, just to proceed on that point, you know, I was very involved in the development of the existing code that is in place throughout Sandpoint. Many of you were as well. When you talk about connectivity and cul-de-sacks, one of the the reasons for it is this is a great example where you have two neighbors who literally can talk over the fence. But for Johnny to go play with his friend, you know, you got to walk on this big loop, you know, and you're really separated by distances that make little sense. So this would be a great, great opportunity right here where you could have some connectivity through a cul-de-sac. But what we're talking about is a little different and I just want to make a couple of points here. So what staff and the planning commission has asked is for that light green, you know, pathway between Lot five and six there. And what I've highlighted here on this diagram is both north and south of the property on the west side of Boyer, there is no sidewalk. So anyone wanting to walk from or to this development, they're going to be on the east side of of Boyer. Further, if you have that cut through there, you're you're basically looking at causing people to dump out onto Boyer and then have a mid-block crossing. And when you think about that, especially in the dark nights that are upon us when we've had our two most recent pedestrian fatalities, we really want pedestrians be crossing at designated crossing points. And if logically you go through this, you would see clearly that the best way for a pedestrian to access or entrance, enter this development is to come down the future road onto Mountain View and then cross at that Mountain View-Boyer intersection. So that's really the the layout of why, from a safety perspective, we think this condition is not warranted. Further, in the staff report, and our request specifically is that condition I be removed from the conditions of approval. The justification in the staff report references the comp plan and talks about new neighborhoods and it it references policy B, which is neighborhood services, public open spaces and parks shall be connected with multimodal paths. The proposed condition does not accomplish any of these goals because there are no parks or public open spaces or neighborhood services in the vicinity of this this little pathway that they're they're asking to be punched through the block. So again, again, our our request here is fairly simple. And that's that condition I be removed from from the conditions of approval beyond that we are, as Cliff mentioned, we're quite, we concur with all the other findings of the planning commission. And finally, there was some public comment about the airport and the lateral safety zone. You can see the law right here, that lateral safety zone is just on the border, no house would be actually constructed in that because of setbacks. And, you know, it's not untypical for Platts to be approved in and around the airport. Most of the Platts that I was involved with that were approved around the airport do contain a condition on the face of the plat, so anyone buying property there something like this that they recognize there's a runway and there's increased air traffic, noise, vibration, fumes, dust, et cetera, et cetera. And staff has included some language to be conveyed to future buyers of property in this development that makes them aware of the same. So we we just appreciate your time tonight. I know you have a lot of these coming through you at this at this time, but we'd entertain any questions you have. I'm sure you're curious about something. If not, we'll wait for rebuttal.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have some, but I'll let anybody else go first.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I would like to know if you would be open to moving that pathway to the very north end and using part of one of those lots. And I would also like to know if the developer would be open to snub nose as opposed to the cul-de-sac. And yes, I've read every word of the staff report and I watched the planning meeting before I came to this meeting.
And can I add to that, Jeremy? I mean, wouldn't it make more sense of, you know, going back to your argument with the roundabout cul-de-sac? It would make more sense to have that pathway at the end near where the where the cul-de-sac is because it would be further from the primary entry point at Mountain View and closer to the intersection north of Mountain View.
And I would also like to add to that, that we do not know what is going to be on those other lots. And I know that they are zoned industrial, I believe. Is that not correct? So in an argument like is placed in front of us many times by developers and others, how do we know that somebody might not build a wonderful business there that would allow these people to walk to their place of work as opposed to getting in the car, just like your little circly diagram and driving all the way around to get into the parking lot where they work? So I learned from you when I was on the planning commission, Jeremy, that so many of our subdivisions, and I get to go to one in Atlanta all the time where my sister lives, are built right next to shopping malls, but people are forced to get into their cars to drive around the block because there's no opening to get there. Granted, there will never be a shopping mall here, but there might be something else that people want to access. So right here, I believe you have built us another one of those curly tubes. So I'm asking if the developer is open to putting that walkway through at the end of the subdivision and snub nosing as opposed to cul-de-sacking because we don't know. And as far as putting it out in your lovely diagram onto North Boyer here, things are always in a constant state of change. And maybe someday we will have pathways or bike lanes on both sides of those, which would allow someone better access to that. And then I would argue, although I do not know, and I might have to refer to Dan on this, that you quoted it would add three thousand dollars cost each one of these houses. I believe I've counted twenty lots, that's sixty thousand dollars. I'm not quite sure that a pathway at that length and width would actually cost sixty thousand dollars. So it may, I'm not a developer, I'm not a builder, I don't know what the costs are, I don't know what the inflation is, but again, I also see double-fronted lots. And I also saw the arguments against those, but I also read in some of the code where we are supposed to leave a common way, is it called Amanda? I don't know who I look to here, if I look to Darren or along that roadway. I know there's always these arguments about different types of fences, but I was reading that there needs to be some common ground if you're going to double-frontage lot. So can somebody bring me up to speed on that because I can't quote exactly which quote code it was. I may have written it down, but I would have to flip back through some notes, so.
Are you talking about Title X of the city code?
I wouldn't know the title name, but.
That's about double-frontage? Yeah.
Right, so the common space of twenty five feet or more between any street right of way and any single row lot shall not be considered to have platted double-frontage. So do we have that common way here? Because I believe that is per Title X of the city code.
Are those all your questions, Councilwoman Rule?
I may have more, but.
Okay, let me start at the top of the list. In terms of moving the pathway, you know, whether it's on the north or centrally located, it's a five hundred and eighty one foot long, you know, block here. So this is pretty typical of many of our blocks in Sandpoint. It's not extraordinarily long. It really doesn't pose a barrier for future connectivity or access for anyone living there to go to the west, it's probably a three minute, two minute walk. So you're right, we don't know what's going to the west or to the north in the future. But in terms of dropping people today out into Boyer Ave and having them walk along a busy arterial down to a preferred crossing, we just feel that it's safer for the neighborhood and for those visiting the neighborhood to travel on sidewalks the whole way internally in this development. The safety thing is another part of connectivity and the public realm that we're all aware of, the streets, the sidewalks, anywhere somebody can stand and legally say I'm on public property is something no one can control. And in the world we live in today, you know, having more public realm, you know, between houses in neighborhoods, it's it's unsettling to to many residents. They would prefer to be able to know people coming in and out of their development or in out of their street are are seen and they know who's coming and going by by watching that. So I'll defer to Mr. Mort about his comments on potentially moving that pathway. But moving on to reconfiguring the cul-de-sac, the lots as proposed do meet the code. You know, there is language in the comprehensive plan that speaks to a discouragement of cul-de-sacks. And again, it's the spirit, I think a lot gets lost when I wrote that. The spirit is that you avoid these huge inter uninterconnected, impossible to transverse developments. So cul-de-sacks in and of themselves are not some evil thing. Code does not prohibit them. And in this case, I'm going to defer to Dan Tadic, the city engineer, in a moment, who can speak to some of the dimensional restrictions that would make any other configuration incompatible with the urban area transportation plan, specifically accessing Boyer anywhere between Mountain View and to the north. Some of those separation distances can't be met met. The double-frontage lots, again, that is something I will just mention, you know, in terms of a feasible design for this particular property. When you're trying to incorporate the vision of the comprehensive plan and the very strict prescriptive requirements of the urban area transportation plan, there's a inquiry there, they they don't match up, you can't do both. It's like trying to breathe underwater. You just, you can't do it because the standards in the urban area and transportation plan don't allow for alternative configuration. So what we're trying to do here is provide infill development to bring more lots on to the market. One of the challenges we have today with the pricing in this market is the lack of inventory, which is why we see home prices where they are. So we're trying to solve that by proposing a very modest and comfortable infill project here. The cost of the path, I'm gonna defer to Cliff, he's done some analysis on landscaping and has built a lot of these things, a lot more than I have. So I believe I've addressed those, you're you're pointing on the double-frontage lot, the code does allow lots to be buffered with a twenty five foot green space or buffer zone there, and they aren't considered double-frontage. In this case, staff in looking at the demands of the urban area transportation plan has determined that these are not double-frontage lots, or if they are, they can comply with the standards because of those limitations of access points on Boyer. So I think those, I don't know if you want to hear the expert in the room on urban area transportation plan speak to some of those access challenges, but I guess that's what we'd have to say right now. Cliff, did you want to speak to anything there?
As far as, not to interrupt you, but as far as listening to Dan, I already listened into the planning commission and I saw all the details were covered in that meeting and but yet again, I will voice my frustration and make it evident to the rest of the council that quite often this urban area transportation plan is taking over. Darren had that nice graphic about multimodal and nothing is ever multimodal. It's car centric, this is designed car centric, we have to rush the cars down Boyer, it's always about rushing the cars down our smaller artillery type streets. But the other end of Boyer has a much different feel to it. As we all know, it's still used as an arterial. And I think that not only with this development, but others along Boyer, that we've blown our opportunity to create another South Sandpoint in this area. That's not Cliff's fault. I'm sure he's a very nice man and I'll allow him to answer that question.
Well, that's some of the struggle with infill development and where there's only a certain amount of land in Sandpoint. You're you're kind of limited a little bit with that. So you know, with this particular neighborhood, I think it is the best design for it. We've done a lot of neighborhoods that do have the T street at the end that you're talking about as far as access. And what I find is there's always problems and I can point to many, many cities we've done those in. And those become much more difficult for the city to monitor people parking in those and so forth and and keeping the the turnaround areas that are required for emergency vehicles and so forth in those neighborhoods. And you know, it's fine while we we build it and all of that stuff, but you know, it it's much more difficult to to do that. And I I know that that becomes an issue for the city when they get the phone calls. And and in addition to that, I think just from a navigation standpoint, from a from a car, we'll just talk that side, it's much easier to get in and out of a cul-de-sac that you you turn in and drop a kid off from soccer or it's somebody that's going to their family's place for dinner or whatever. And those cul-de-sacks become actually a spot of community as well. I think you you see that in a lot of the neighborhoods that that we're in that you know, certainly there's congregation there in that neighborhood and and that's, that's just kind of what happens because it isn't a through street and it's not a spot for for just turnaround because it's large enough for people to navigate in and out. Now, the the walk path and the in the bike path, I I really don't feel that an additional five or six hundred feet for somebody walking in and out of this neighborhood is gonna gonna hurt anybody to go mid-block or at the end of the block. I I just don't see the need for a pathway and the and the cost of that, it's not just the cost of the asphalt. It's obviously in these soils conditions, you have, you you obviously have compaction, you have, you have to take out materials that are unsuitable. So you have all of those types of things. And then in addition, you know, we'd have to fence the the sides of those yards and so forth for the neighborhood because they're the person that's going to live right next to that isn't going to want to have, you know, their their yard opened up to that pathway. And it it just goes on and on. And I I use that as a range, but I I can honestly say that by the time it goes from the initial hard costs and and goes through all of the 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 point to a retail cost, you're you're going to be in that range of about three thousand additional for a house. And the last time I looked, affordability in Sandpoint was a major issue, not only affordability, but the need for housing. So a little twenty lot subdivision off Boyer, I think this is a great use for the property and and I just request that you you'd take a look at that. You know, it's there, there's more than just all of those points. And I get that everybody's trying to make sure that Sandpoint is is a wonderful community and it is, it's beautiful community. But we're, we're not going to create a something that you're you're not going to be proud of here. This is going to be a nice neighborhood, so.
So Cliff, before you go, I just wanted to, I I think I heard your answer was no on the moving, moving the pathway.
I I would request that you just eliminate it altogether. You're you're going to have sidewalk all the way around this neighborhood and and plenty of ways to get in and out of it. It's less than six hundred feet.
Okay. Do you have any further questions, Counselor?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, so thank you very much, Cliff, for being up here. Appreciate that. I appreciate actually meeting you and getting to hear what you have to say. And I I believe this to be, I too watched the P and Z meeting, so I get to pick up on some of these new terms such as infill. I think that you are pretty right on with it. This is a good location for that infill. And I've lived on a cul-de-sac that's not that far from their Sapphire Court. It was right next to work. We walked, it was great, young kids, it was nice and it was private. It it was a great community, as you had said. So that's the nice part. So the other the other two parts of this are going to be one. It, our planning and zoning committee do a great job with educating themselves and vocalizing their thoughts as well as representing the citizenry. I I don't take their requests to developers lightly. I want to hear what they have to say. And I would like to believe that it's been vetted through staff, it's been vetted through the P and Z committee, and it comes to us in a way, and this is the not so nice, the deal on the the side deal, the deal after the deal. So we, as well as P and Z, as well as other developers, are coming under criticism of what the previous comp plan was or how it was written. I've heard that you might have been a potential author. I don't know, I'm not speculating that, but it sounds like there's some very significant challenges that we're working through. It's challenging to have maybe the potential author of that language that's now currently being challenged, sit here and try to maneuver around something. So as a council member as well as a citizen, that's hard for me to try to sit here and swallow a deal on top of a deal. I don't know. Maybe those individuals that would purchase those lots that have that pathway in there are ones that may really, that might be a very attractive quality to them. I I don't know. So it's up to the rest of us to speak towards that. I am having a real difficult time going up against the recommendations. I hear what you're saying. I do. I the cost and affordability, most of us are up here because we want workforce housing like that. There's some important elements to that. However, the voice of the citizens of Sandpoint are also heard and spoken at the P and Z committee. And they they have spoken very loudly that this is something that's important to them. Then just a statement, there's no need for rebuttal. So thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Okay, well, now proceed with the public hearing. Please note for the record, any written comment submitted prior to agenda posting was included with the meeting packet. Any written comment received after agenda posting but prior to the meeting was forwarded and provided to council. The public hearing is for comments only. Do not address any questions to the council or city staff. If counselors have questions for the person testifying, they should ask those questions at the time of their testimony. For those in attendance here in chambers, if you'd like to speak, you'll need it to complete a sign up form at the front of the room by the door and hand it to the city clerk up front. Please state on your form whether you wish to speak in favor or neutral or opposed to the application. Do not approach the dais. If you have any written materials for council, please hand those to the city clerk up front. For those participating on Zoom, please note that you will need a working microphone on your phone or computer to speak. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen, ask When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to, asking whether you would like to unmute, then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. The clerk will now lower all hands on Zoom in order to take testimony in the order previously stated. If you wish to speak in favor or neutral or are in opposition, I will make a call for each. Then you may raise your hand at that time. And again, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. So first, do we have anyone in the room who would like to speak? In in favor? Any in the room who would like to speak? Neutral? Any in the room who would like to speak opposed? Okay. We'll now go on Zoom. Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak in favor?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone participating remotely who would like to speak neutral?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And lastly, is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak opposed?
I have one hand raised.
Okay.
Molly O'Reilly.
Mayor, City Council, I'm not opposed to the development. I couldn't quite tell which category to put myself in. In about 2003, I inventoried sidewalks for the city of Sandpoint for the first sidewalk inventory. And North Boyer was really scary. I would only do it on my bicycle on a Sunday morning because there were no bike lanes. There was no bike path. There was no pathway. There were no sidewalks on either side. It was truly horrible. City Council had a priority to start getting sidewalks and trail on Boyer. And you have what you see today. You've made really good progress. There's still one gap on the east side, but now you've got a nice opportunity to add sidewalk on the west side and connectivity. And this development is across from Shady Oak Lane, which is a cul-de-sac with an outlet, a pedestrian bicycle outlet to Boyer. And the assumption that there's no sidewalk, never will be sidewalk on that west side, I think is very inaccurate and very short-sighted. You only get to connectivity by getting the pieces in there so you can continue till you've till you've succeeded. So I would like you to encourage you to either stay with what planning and zoning recommended or move it, move the 10-foot pathway north. And I think homeowners can put the fence up they want next to the bike path, the pedestrian bicycle access. No reason for the developer to do it. Somebody might just even want chain links so they can see who's coming through. Who knows? And there's always the assumption seemingly that people who are walking or on bicycles or skateboards are dangerous. It's people and vehicles who tend to get in and out pretty fast and cause any kind of problem. I don't think this is going to create any security problem. And I welcome those 20 families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Appreciate those comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak opposed?
There are no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I had offered the applicant the opportunity for rebuttal if you feel like that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No more.
Okay, at this time, I will now close the public hearing. And the council will deliberate. So at this at this time, no new information may be provided and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. The staff report includes suggested motions for council members.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate at this time to make a motion to move the pathway to the north end of that subdivision? Or are we kind of not in a?
You can make that motion at this time.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to move the pedestrian pathway to the northern aspect of the subdivision so that people have better access to moving north along Boyer. Not that that has to be in the motion, but as a reason.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
So Councilwoman Rule, are you indicating you'd like to amend condition J to relocate the pathway that's been recommended by staff?
I think it was I, was it not?
I, maybe it's I.
I don't have those documents in front of me. I have your face, which is beautiful. But yes, I'd like to amend motion I to move the pathway to the northern border of this subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a further bit of clarification. If we could specifically note between which lot numbers the council member would like that pathway, if I am understanding correctly, it looks to be between lots nine and 10 of block one of the cul-de-sac. But it it could be that we are talking about between lots eight and nine.
If somebody can, I'm sorry, Darren, didn't mean to interrupt you. That was rude. If somebody can show me a map on the, oh, Andy's coming up with the iPad here.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna follow.
Darren, can you pull up a map, please? Thank you.
Right, perfect. Thank you. It would be to the north of Lot 10 and Block 1.
In this location.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is it J or I?
It's, I think it's J.
It was J. How did, did it get changed from I?
Earlier from somebody up there.
Yeah, okay.
But in the document, it's J.
Just wanted to make sure of that.
My document shows J.
It is.
Okay, okay. Then I'm gonna go with J. I heard an I earlier, so I was confused. You did. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I don't have dementia.
And Councilwoman Rule, can you reiterate what lots that you want?
I would like to amend J so that the pedestrian pathway would be on the northern border of Lot 10 and Block 1, abutting the other property that is not owned by the developer. So it would be on the border, the northern border.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a second?
Can we discuss it more?
We can discuss it more.
I just want to fully understand, just so I know why you want to move it to there instead of leaving it at the middle.
My thought process would be that those are industrial lots on the north side, and we do not know what kind of businesses may develop there. So it would be a legal access point for anybody in that subdivision. If somebody puts up a coffee shop or convenience store or if some sort of business goes in there that employs 20, 30 people, like quite often happens here in Sandpoint, that someone who lives in this subdivision will be able to legally walk out that end of the subdivision and not walk across somebody's property. And it seems to me to make more sense since this is a cul-de-sac plat that we're looking at, that anybody wanting to travel north would have to go all the way out the subdivision and then double back. And so as the crow flies, I think it makes more sense to put it in at the north and for people that may want to travel to Ponderay to go to Walmart, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, please. As developing a past project personally and having to build these bike paths, in retrospect, I realized that they also take away a lot of safety from the existing housing. And my particular project where a bike path was, it was a means to the end for the development, but it also allows public people to be able to walk within 15 to 20 feet of the front doors of my particular development. And, you know, in today's age, that really takes away privacy, to be honest with you. So the safetiness of a cul-de-sac, knowing that you're not gonna get transient people just walking within the footsteps of your front door, I see it as a complete, you know, takeaway from the putting it up, whether it's in the middle of the development or it's just allowing people the opportunity to walk through a place that they don't necessarily need to be.
I would have to strongly disagree, making an assumption that everybody is bad. We have sidewalks everywhere in Sandpoint, and there's many homes that are that are a lot closer to the street than others. One of my best friends has their front door. It can't be but 15 feet from their sidewalk. And I don't feel like they feel any less safe. So I just don't think that your argument holds water. Thank you.
Matter of opinion. Thank you.
Yeah. Question.
Go ahead.
So on the shady.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt for a second? I think you ought to ask for a second. I think we're getting into deliberation. If we have a second, we can move forward.
Okay, there there is a motion to amend item J that would move the 10-foot path to the north end of the development, abutting Lot 10 and the property line to the north. Is there a second for that motion to amend?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Can I amend that motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to amend that motion excluding item J from with approval for the development.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to treat that separately. So I think we're gonna have to.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to move on the motion that's on the floor before the council. If there's a second motion that would be considered at that point in time.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna vote on the motion to amend. Item G is is moved and seconded. And then if you if you want to make another amendment, we can come back to you. So this will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Darling?
No.
Councilwoman Spurrow?
I still have some questions concerning moving it, and I'm not comfortable until those are answered. So no.
Councilman Groth?
No.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
No.
Okay, that does not, that amendment fails.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question. Joel was not able to get all of his questions answered. I thought we were getting the second so we could deliberate. And.
Were there, were there any further questions?
Joel had further questions before we were, that he did not get answered.
Yeah, if within our legal rights to do so.
Yes, we can, we can re-vote.
Yeah, I just, just to the council, I just had some concerns. If it looks like this 10-foot lot would be split between these two lots in the middle, where if we move it all the way to the top to Lot 10, it looks like that whole 10-foot would be taken out of Lot 10. And that seems like quite a bit to take out of one lot as opposed to the middle. If we're gonna keep it, it splits it between the two properties. That was just one concern. I don't know if that, how much that would affect the developer since they don't own the property to the north, if I understand this correctly. So it seems like it was too much to take off of one property as opposed to the splitting. If we were to, just on that, just on moving it, that was one of my concerns. So I didn't fully, to be fair to the developer, we, I don't think we're able to ask those questions or maybe staff can answer those questions. Would that affect that lot too much just to move it? It's just a concern of mine, and I don't know if they can rebuttal or not.
Yeah, change your vote at all?
Huh? It it might, but it definitely was a concern of mine.
I mean, would it change your vote on the motion that's before the council?
Possibly, depending on what the answer is. In theory, yes. Anything can.
I would have an additional question then, that the way I understand this is this is preliminary, preliminary plating so that once you close that gap in the middle, everything would shift south. So all the lots would stay the same size. I don't know. I don't know enough about planning and plaques, but I understand preliminary, preliminary, I'm struggling with that word tonight, I apologize, means that it's not exact.
Dan, can you speak to that? Did you, did you hear the question?
Mr. Mayor, it's probably Darren and/or Fonda.
Okay. Darren or Fonda, can you speak to that question? Did you hear that question clearly or did you need her to restate it?
Mr. Mayor, I think I heard the question. And yes, you're considering a preliminary plat. It is within your purview to place conditions of approval that change the layout and configuration of the plat that's before you. That's a fairly minor change. There's plenty of room within the the project to accommodate that change. And so that is something that is within your purview, and we would rewrite the condition of approval. And when the final plat came in, we would ensure that there was compliance with that condition.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Espiro, is that satisfactory for you? Are you clear on that?
I'm not super clear, but probably because I'm not a developer. So what I understood, Darren, if I may, that 10-foot path would be put on the top of Lot 10, and then everything would be shifted down. That would be a requirement. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, council member, that is correct.
Okay. And Darren, maybe you can, since we're here, what is the length between the middle where the the actual request is for the middle pathway to the end of to Block 10? Is that 300 feet roughly?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Halfway where it's at.
So you're you're asking what's the distance from this point south?
To north. Or either way, it seems like it's right in the middle. So what is, is that about 300 feet?
Yeah, I think, Jeremy, I'll correct me if I'm wrong here. It's about 561 feet end to end. So, you know, this is roughly in the middle, so it's roughly 300 feet. I'll I'll go and measure longer.
That's fine. Just.
Joel, it looks like it's half a 581.
Yeah, that's, that's not terribly long walk. Okay, thank you. My motion still stands. My my vote.
Yeah. Okay. Any further deliberation or motions to amend? John?
Can I amend? So did that motion fail?
It did.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion excluding item J with approval of the development.
So you'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, but amend the conditions to remove item J?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
I, one of the reasons I seconded, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I agree with Councilwoman Rule that not everybody on the bike or skateboard, or Molly might have made that, said that as well, is a bad person or anything like that. I don't think that's the case by any means. But somebody who has four kids, I do also understand and respect the privacy aspect, as Councilman Darling pointed to. We live in a different world. It's, I would say, possibly more dangerous to some degree, with especially more people moving in. So I can respect and understand the privacy aspect and, you know, just look up the sex offenders just that live in our community. And not that anybody can't change. I totally believe they can. But I have uneasy times sometimes with my kids being certain places. So even in our little town, and I would, me personally, wouldn't like just people walking through in and out that may not be a part of my community that I don't know, that may change later on in my life. But that's how I feel at the moment. So it's one reason I seconded Councilman Darlings. But I do also want to respect the fact that not every person that walks by my house or we should be thinking they're up to no good. That's not the point. So.
Madam Clerk, I might ask a point of order here. Can can I ask you to recount what the vote was on that first motion to amend?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We had four no votes and two yes votes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to reiterate why I made that motion. You know, as a young family owner, you know, living in Lot 10 down at the end of the cul-de-sac could be very, very comforting for a young family, knowing that there's 14 sets of eyes on every vehicle that travels in and out of that. You know, you think about it, the kids are gonna be flocked to that cul-de-sac because it's the largest. You know, you think about it, the kids are gonna be flocked to that cul-de-sac because it's the largest open space. Well, for a parent to have an opening at that end of it where a kid could just get out onto a bike path, onto an arterial, it's honestly a great playground for kids, and my kids grew up where there were cul-de-sacs, and they spent all their time there riding bicycles and skateboarding and rollerblades and kicking soccer balls, and so you know, I think this is a, a great development for young families, especially if we can keep it affordable. I am a huge bicyclist, I love connectivity, Deb, I respect everything that you said. I just think, I love the safety standard of this development, the way that it sets with no additional bike path.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I also agree, I think safety is a big thing, feeling safe, and my grandkids are growing up in a cul-de-sac, and they actually love it. My concern is, I don't want to add that additional three thousand dollars to the price of the house, because we're in a situation where people need homes. And I'm supportive of the bike trails, I'm supportive of the paths, I always have been, I walk on all of them. But I really think it, it, if it's gonna cost that much more, I just don't think that that's worth it, I mean, three thousand dollars to a family, I mean, I make forty-five thousand dollars a year. If it's a three thousand dollar increase, that might, that might break it for me, that I could not afford this house. And so I think I would rather forego the pathway and keep the cul-de-sac whole.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Unless you have something, Andy, that you'd like to add?
No, I was just trying to remember where we were at with that, we've been at the second to the
Okay, so I'm going to make a very broad, big statement. I'd be growing exceedingly disappointed in this council because we sit up here and we second-guess what our planning commission is doing. We second-guess all the members of the public that come to that planning commission meetings and state what they want. We are now second-guessing our multimodal plans that try to incorporate these pathways. There's another pathway almost directly across the way that for some reason did not get cut out. I would second-guess this in everybody's heartstrings of, I want the safe neighborhood. I, I just don't buy those arguments, you've got an industrial lot at the end of this subdivision, nobody has any idea what's gonna go in there, and to say in, in this picturesque world that we're creating up here that this is idyllic, and your kids are gonna be safe at the end of the cul-de-sac, who knows what's gonna go in there, and who knows how many, you know, seventeen-year-old testosterone-filled boys like the one I have at home are gonna zip in and out of the parking lot because they got a job at whatever went in there, and they're so concerned about getting to their own social event that they don't pay attention, and your small little child playing at the end of the cul-de-sac doesn't know where that lot line is. Maybe there's not a big fence that goes up there because the developer doesn't want to spend the money to put it in. That's part of the industrial thing. So to me, none of those arguments hold any water because you're building right up next to an industrial lot line. So if you want an idyllic, safe neighborhood, then the end of this cul-de-sac isn't necessarily where you want to buy a house. And who's to say that the person living next to the path, as I heard, you know, Jeremy say in the planning commission meeting that was recorded, well, when somebody complained about the helicopters, maybe we have a helicopter aficionado here who lives in here and is never gonna complain about the noise in the written into the deed piece. Well, maybe we have somebody who loves to live next to a bike path. I mean, we can all say that, and there's research that shows subdivisions built next to connectivity and trails have, they, they have higher prices on the market. Granted, this is a tiny little piece of sidewalk, and I get that it's not necessarily the same thing, but it allows connectivity, and I guarantee you when those tiny little children turn into teenagers, they're gonna cross that lot line and walk through that neighbor's yard because they're not gonna go around to get to Walmart, they're gonna take the direct path to where they want to go.
Mr. Mayor, I take umbrage with that. We, as a city council, I think we do a good job listening to the people, and I think we take all things into consideration. I appreciate your passion, Councilwoman Rule, but I really take umbrage with the fact that you are saying that we don't listen to the people and we aren't listening. I think we are too, this is a very dialectic conversation where there are two sides to this issue, and I think everything is supposition, the seventeen-year-old driver is a supposition, and so all of it, I mean, that's what we have to do, and so I think that, again, my, my big thing is, I don't want to add three thousand dollars cost to an individual's house price, and just like you, I read everything, I listen to all the P and Z meetings, and so I, I really take umbrage with that, that we are not prepared and that we make foolish decisions, because I do not agree with that.
I did not say they were foolish, I just said they were against what I perceive to be multimodal plans and comprehensive plans and other types of plans that a bigger committee and a bigger population of our city has asked for, has asked us to do, and I don't feel like we are necessarily holding up our end of the bargain. And I agree with you on one level with three thousand dollars to add to a house, but I am going to say that if I hear one more developer or one more consultant come in front of us and talk about affordable housing and workforce housing, and those housing, houses go on the market for no less than four hundred thousand dollars, we all know that nobody can afford them, so we just need to quit bringing that word in front of this council. It's an irritant to me, be creative, do something more than twenty houses on your property. You talk really huge about all the developments you've done everywhere, and you want to pull on somebody's heartstrings about grandmother being born in Clark Fork. It is totally irrelevant to the decisions we have to make up here. Don't tell me where you're from, or that you have a second house on the lake up here or on the mountain, and you think you're part of our community. Do you know which vans and which cars are parked on our streets right now because those people don't have a place to live? I would beg that you probably do not. And I know a good handful that I've been watching over the past summer months, that they don't have homes. So I understand we live in a capitalist society, and thank you for coming here to develop homes, and it's your right to make money. Everybody has to make a living, and I'm not denying you of yours, but I wish that people would stop coming in front of this council and trying to pass off every subdivision as something that's affordable for our community. Until somebody steps in front of me and shows me something creative that can be built, that people can afford, I would request that we stop using those words, thank you.
Counsel, I'd like to propose something that might be a middle path here. I agree with a lot of what's been said here, and I agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to ensure that we have a better connectivity with this development, particularly considering that it's
Mr. Mayor, I think we have a motion on the floor, we should vote on that motion before we consider any other action.
Thank you, counsel. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
No.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
No.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spuro?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Are there any further suggested amendments, motions to amend? Or should we go to the main motion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe if you have the clerk read back the motion, the motion was to approve the preliminary plat with the removal of condition J. So that was the main motion.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, counsel, all right, with that, this application is approved, with J being removed. Thank you, congratulations. The last item. Under Old Business this evening is a request for approval of the final plat for Phase Two A of the University Place interim city planner Darren Fluke will provide a presentation to answer any questions we may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Darren Fluke again, sharing my screen. And I trust you're seeing that fine, you're here this evening to consider a final plat for University Place subdivision Phase Two A. The council will recall that you heard a final plat application for Phase One just two weeks ago. This property, as you can see outlined here, is located south of Mountain View Drive and east of North Boyer Avenue. The applicant in this situation is M and W Holdings LLC. I'm going to go through just a little bit of a primer on final plaques relative to preliminary plaques, there seemed to be some confusion within the community, particularly within the media, as to how final plaques are approved and what their function is. And so you'll forgive me if I, if I'm telling you things you already know. I will bust through this fairly quickly, and if you have questions, please feel free to break in at any time. So the council will just please recognize that the subdivision planning process is just a process. It is, it is a way for people to take larger parcels of land and to break those down into smaller lots for sale. And so when we say we're plating, we're taking unplatted property that is referred to as parcels of land and turning those into lots and locks. With regard to the subdivision procedures, you've seen this graphic many times, you'll see that you are now in a different place than you were on the previous application. At the final plat stage, what you're really reviewing is, does what's before you, what the applicant has already built, does that comply with what was previously approved? That's what we're looking at, there is no need to take any further testimony, there is no need for further deliberation. Really, the question in front of you is simply, does what the applicant already built and expended significant funds on comply with what the city previously approved? So we are at this step two, final plate, final plat stage now. So at the risk of being redundant here, please note that plating is the process for dividing parcels of land into smaller lots, as stated. The preliminary plat process ensures consistency with the comprehensive plan with zoning and subdivision standards, and allows for public input and conditions of approval to be placed on the construction of the project. Having just gone through that process, you're well familiar with that, what you're doing there, which is trying to ensure consistency with the plans that the community has adopted through their, their public process. And importantly, it does require that the developer both design and construct public improvements. And of course, there are many checks and balances along the way, those designs are carefully reviewed by the city and their consultants for consistency with good engineering design and, and the standards for public works construction. And once those designs are approved, then the applicant is on the hook to go and build those at their own cost. So with regard to final plaques, please realize these are not discretionary actions on your part. Again, the question is, does the final plat comply with what was approved at the preliminary plat stage? Think of this as a contract between yourself and the developer. You've, they've told you they will do certain things, and you've agreed that if they do those things, they will be able to create lots for sale. So that is, is very much a quid pro quo, and it's to the, the public's benefit that the developers are made to construct public improvements that further the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And, and again, you are obligated to accept those improvements, provided that they are constructed in conformance with your standards and, and the public work standards, and that they pass inspection and comply with the original approval. There are other signatories on the plat, and, and this is important. Again, I, I mentioned the checks and balances idea, and with final plaques, there are many checks to ensure that the public gets the improvements that are required in return for the developer getting the lots that he would like to sell. So the Health District is basically interested in ensuring that the sewer and water lines are properly constructed, in the case of a city, that those sewer lines are connected to a wastewater treatment plant, and that the water is coming from a known, entrusted, and safe source. And so when that's been proven to the Health District, they will sign the plat after they've, you know, reviewed the construction documents and the, the inspections. The Independent Highway District, on the other hand, is actually signing the plat to certify that they are accepting the public right-of-way. And so the plat is the instrument that transfers the streets, the public right-of-way, and which would include the curb gutter and sidewalk and sometimes drainage facilities. And the plat is the instrument that then transfers ownership of that actual land to the public entity, in this case, the Independent Highway District, in some cases, it would be directly to the city. The city council reviews the plat basically as a check on the city planner, which is right below you, and the city planner signs the plat to ensure that the plat as drawn complies with what was approved by the city council, that all the lots meet the minimum lot size for the zoning designation, that they have the minimum frontage, that all the required improvements, such as pathways, bike lanes, sewer lines, water lines, all have been installed in accordance with the preliminary approval. The city council is the final check on that, and the way that typically works is the city staff certifies for the mayor and council that the improvements have been made, and then, then you sign the plat. The city engineer is another check, ensuring that the public infrastructure has been built according to all plans and specifications, and does ensure that we have a warranty bond, ensuring that the construction is of high quality, and if it fails within a certain amount of time, that it will be replaced by the developer at their expense. And then the county surveyor and treasurer both sign, they're the last signatures. The county surveyor certifies that the actual boundary of the plat contains the amount of land that the development, the developer says that it does, and that each one of the lots contain the amount of land that the developer says that it does, that all the bearings and distances work, and it fits with the other surveying that's been done in the area. And then finally, the county treasurer simply certifies that there's no outstanding taxes or fees owed on the property that's being platted, and if there are, they will require that those be paid before they sign. So lots and lots of checks and balances, which brings us to tonight's application. The mayor will, the mayor and the council will recall that the University Place preliminary plat was approved by the city council on November fourth of 2020. This is the approved phasing plan that, that you all approved when you reviewed the project. In total, the property boundary there includes seventy-four acres, and everything within the boundary is R S. You saw the Phase One final plat application a couple of weeks ago. That is working its way through the final steps of the process and will soon be signed, and you'll start to see construction go up on, on the lots that are being platted. For you tonight is Phase Two A, which is there outlined in blue to the south, and we're gonna go a little bit deeper into that, knowing that Phase Two B will be subsequently in front of you, as will Phases Three and Four. I know there's been some questions about the land that's being dedicated to the Kinnick's Land Trust. This is the exhibit that was provided to the council during your approval process. And please note that this is a voluntary agreement between the applicants and the K L T that was worked out during the preliminary plat phase. And, you know, further, the, the applicants are unable to convey this land until it's plating, and that's to say, you have to have the lot created before you can convey that lot to another party. And so the plat must be recorded and the lot, you know, owned free and clear to be able to be conveyed to, to the land trust, and that will happen subsequent to the recordation of the plat. So, let's see, this was the exhibit that was in, provided to the council and, and there during the approval process. Phase One did include this parcel three here, and will be able to be conveyed once the plat's recorded. And then the, the phase in front of you tonight does contain parcels one and two, and you're gonna look at that in more detail right now. So this is the phase two A final plat that you're considering this evening. Staff has ensured that the required public improvements are in place and that the layout does conform with what was approved by the city. The land that will eventually be conveyed to the land trust is this lot here, lot four, as well as this lot here. The previous plat is up to the north of, of this project, and you can't see it within the boundary. The plot in front of you tonight does include 51 buildable lots, including this middle tier of lots. It's an alley loaded product. And then the, you know, the lots in the public streets, as you see configured here. So with regard to those required public improvements within this phase, prior to tonight, we've ensured that the sewer lines are constructed and inspected and accepted, as well as the lift station, the water lines, the hydrants, the storm lines, the curb and gutter, and then the pavement of the streets. All of that work is done. Before the plat will be recorded, and we still have a check or two on that from additional signatures is the as-built or record drawings from the developer's surveyor. We understand the street signage to be going in tomorrow and the permanent power and testing of the, the lift station the day after that. This is an important consideration. There are some public improvements that will not be completed prior to your signature on the plat or prior to selling the lots. And you see those on the far right of the slide. And these include the streetlights, the storm swales, some sidewalks, the street trees, the backup generator for the lift station. And it is important for you to realize though, that we're holding a cash bond for these improvements. And if they are not completed by the date you see there, December 31 of 2021, the city will have those improvements installed and will utilize the applicant's bond to do that. It's very much in the applicant's interest to get that work done, as it's much more cost effective for them to do the work themselves rather than to pay the bond that we are holding for that work. So prior to recording, the city council will approve and enable the mayor to sign. That's what you're working on this evening. The plat will be signed by other agencies. All those signatures are in place with the exception of the city engineer and then the two county signatures that we talked about. The applicant will then be able to record the final C C and Rs for the project and record utilities. Typically, in this case, there are, or there is at least one utility easement that is being recorded independent of the plat. Typically, those easements are shown on the plat, and that would be the conveyance. In this case, there are some that cross unplatted land. And so we've received a separate document for that. And then you'll recall that this particular project had a unique situation with split ownership. And we've been working with the owners to rectify that through approval and recordation of a short plat, which basically splits the parent parcel into two properties that follow the, the ownership lines that are in place right now. It's basically a paper platformality that makes things a little bit easier for both the staff and, and the developers down the line as, as they build out this project in accordance with what the cities approve. That is all I had for you on this, on this final plat. And if the council had any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just had a simple question. I, your maps of the phasing seem to be different than what I reviewed in the council packet. I was just curious about that discrepancy. It, unless I missed this map, I don't ever remember seeing this map.
Mr. Mayor, council member, you're correct. I colored this map up for ease of reading for you. But what you see is the base map, if you were to take those colors off of there, are the phase lines that were approved by the city. And so this is simply enhanced for readership purposes.
Okay, and then the other plating map, can you go back to that, please? Yes, this one. I also don't remember seeing this version. There was one very similar to this, but I was struggling. I'm assuming that that is a designated right of way in the cul-de-sac. Is that correct?
Council member, are you referring to this?
The cul-de-sac, yes. And then the, the opening going out towards the, yes, that. Can you, can you tell me what that is there?
Again, that does double duty as a public utility easement and a pedestrian and bicycle path.
Okay, all right. That I do not believe was in our version, this flat document. Was it in our version?
Council member, I believe that it was. This, this plat hasn't changed at all since we received it. So it, it may have been not very clear within the, the snippet that was placed in the staff report, but it's always been a part of the plat.
Councilwoman, I believe it is item eight A, attachment six, and that would be page two of that attachment.
Okay, I was trying to look for the, the, the version that I was looking at, did not define that right of way very well. So I'm glad to see it here this evening. Thank you for answering that question, Darren.
Welcome. And it's, it's a minor point, but it's actually an easement on that lot and not a public right of way. The easement, however, does benefit the public for the purposes of walking and cycling on it, in addition to the utilities that lie within it.
Right, because there has to be an access to get to the third parcel of the Kinnick's Land.
That's correct.
And this is that access, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that was my concern, that we were not going to have an access to the third parcel of land, not the second parcel, but the third parcel.
Any other questions? Okay, as per city code, council shall approve, approve with conditions, refer the matter back to planning and zoning commission, or deny the final plat. Staff has reported that the conditions of approval have been satisfied and applicable terms of the development agreement have been met. With the phase two A final plat conforming with all applicable standards of Sandpoint City Code and the terms and conditions of the approved preliminary plat and then, and the development agreement, I would entertain a motion for approval of phase two A final plat without further comment or conditions. Is there a motion?
No movement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? This would be a roll call vote.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
No.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Motion passes. The last item on the agenda this evening is a request to declare the North Boyer Road embankment an emergency and authorize the mayor or city administrator to execute expenditures as necessary for emergency work to stabilize the slope and safeguard life, health and property pursuant to Idaho Code section 67 dash 2808, one A triple I. City engineer Dan Tadic will provide a presentation for us. Thanks, Dan.
You're asking a council consideration of North Boyer Road Embankment Emergency Declaration and expenditures? Back in February of 2021, we had a shallow bank embankment failure, shallow slope failure of the east embankment of North Boyer Road between Jenny Lane and Vettelwood Drive. This image gives you a rough approximation of the location. In addition to the shallow slope failure, there was also a hundred, about 120 foot long tension crack that was observed in the asphalt surface. This resulted in the asphalt on the east side of the crack about four inches lower than the asphalt on the west side of the crack. This was right at the road shoulder essentially, and that's indicative of a more significant slope stability issue. As a temporary measure to address the erosion and basically just plug the hole that, that had resulted, some rock was placed, riprap and some smaller quarry spools were, were placed at the slope failure. This image actually shows as well, I took this today, I hadn't had a better photo. It also shows the new asphalt over that northbound lane of Boyer where we have sealed that crack. So we're trying to prevent additional moisture from getting in there until we can do a more significant repair. So out of concerns for the stability of that slope, the city engaged Strata Inc., a geotechnical firm on a core lane, to complete a slope stability risk assessment. They mobilized the site with a trailer mounted drill rig, much like what you see in the photo back on July 8th. They drilled three test borings in that roadway, just a little deeper than 40 feet each. They followed that up with lab testing, analysis and a final report that was included in the packet. The results of their analysis indicated that the east embankment factor of safety on that slope is under one. And I recognize this is kind of a fancy image, but highlight on the under one number there. Factor safety of one is, is actually lower than what we would normally design for. We would normally design for a 1.25 on an embankment like this. But a factor of safety less than one is basically the, the conclusion can be drawn that it's not a matter of if the embankment will fail, it's a matter of just when. And that led Strata to offer their opinion here, and I'll just read that. Our opinion is that the North Boyer Road East Embankment currently meets the requirements necessary for the city to perform an emergency repair of the embankment under Idaho statute 672808 to do emergency work to safeguard life, health or property. So in considering different options for repairs, three options were presented in their forward, and we discussed all these with Strata before they finalized the report. The first option presented is essentially an embankment flat slope, slope flattening, that is just adding additional fill to flatten out that slope on that embankment. Obviously, that's a very simple method, can be done fairly quick and, and fairly inexpensively if you don't have wetlands and private property issues, which of course we have at this location. We did engage a wetlands biologist and his impression is that we have wetlands basically right at the toe of the slope. So any work at the toe, and we're now dealing with delineation permitting, potentially mitigation. So, and obviously private property acquisition, access at a minimum for construction. So we're talking about some pretty significant timeframes impacting our ability to get this done in a timely manner. Second solution considered in the report is a sheet pile retaining wall, which is simply interlocking metal sheets, 30 feet in length roughly, driven, say, two thirds into the ground with a third exposed. This can be a relatively quick installation done with excavator crane, that type of equipment. The benefit, one of the significant pros of this solution is that there's no wetlands or private property impacts, because we could drive that in the middle of the slope and backfill against it. And, you know, we're not dealing with the permitting and durations of all those requirements. Materials readily available generally for the, the sheets as well. The one con we could highlight is there are some overhead lines on the east side where this embankment issue, embankment failure occurred. Those are, it looked to be cable TV and telephone, so less power. But we would likely have to work with the utility providers to temporarily drop those lines while the work was happening. The third option is mechanically stabilized earth retaining wall. This essentially is alternating layers, layers of soil and reinforcing elements behind a wall face. Again, this could result in pretty limited impacts to wetlands or private property. We, we can't say for certain that there would not be impacts as we could with the sheet pile solution. One of the significant cons with this approach is that essentially requires that entire embankment be torn out and then reconstructed from the ground up. So significantly longer duration. There's also utility conflicts. There's an existing water main, north side water district has a water main in that roadway. There's also a vista gas in that roadway in addition to the overhead utilities. So considering the options presented and the options available, staff is recommending a sheet pile solution here. From a cost perspective, it's difficult to ascertain the slope flattening. It seems intuitive that it might be the cheapest, but when you consider the wetlands considerations and private property acquisition, it's tough to say where that number could go. We believe that sheet piling and M S E would be pretty similar in cost. And just as a graphic, I did this for Andy's benefit. Here's the sheet pile example, just what a sheet pile looks like. You can kind of see the interlocking steel sheet faces here with some backfill against it. So next steps, with an emergency declaration tonight would allow for expedited procurements to address the slope stability issue, hopefully before the snow flies. Staff have proactively engaged a structural engineer, Smith Monroe Gray on a Missoula. They are on board to complete a sheet pile design, and we're looking for that by the end of this week, actually. Strata is committed to assisting ongoing with geotechnical support for the structural and then also for contractor eventually. What we've been able to ascertain so far from engaging a local contractor is that they believe the work can be completed this fall. You could expect about a three week road closure, which would be a very small duration compared to some of these other approaches perhaps. That would allow for mobilization, the actual work to be completed, backfill, getting equipment out of there, repaving the roadway. And just highlighting again that our fiscal year 22 budget does include $600,000 toward this project. So number of options available tonight. Option one is of course do nothing. We've, we've got the recommendation of the geotech engineer that perhaps there's a high risk of failure here. Do nothing doesn't mean do absolutely nothing. We could also, there are some mitigation measures we could perhaps employ. We could detour or put a temporary traffic signal to get all the traffic in, even the westbound or excuse me, the northbound traffic in the southbound lane with temporary traffic signals. That does, all it does is buy us time, get, get some of that surcharge off of the northbound lane perhaps. Their detour possibilities, you know, obviously this is a significant route to Schweitzer Resort. And, you know, the prospect of sending people on the Bronx Road, you know, maybe not the best idea. But that perhaps is another option. Option two, which is staff recommendation, is to declare the North Boyer Road Embankment an emergency and authorize the mayor and/or city administrator to execute expenditures as necessary to do emergency work, i.e. stabilize the slope to safeguard life, health and property pursuant to Idaho Code. The third option, if, if there are questions that council has that they don't feel like they've had their answers tonight, we could postpone and direct us to obtain additional information. Guess with that opened up to council question?
So it was put in the budget, I, I see that. So am I to assume that it was in the works to be done anyway, but it just failed sooner than we thought it would?
Well, the budget was put together post failure. So we, we saw that shallow slope failure back in February, so that with that knowledge formed the budget to include the 600,000 toward this repair. That was kind of speculating on what the repair options might be.
Right.
At this point, we're optimistic that that will cover the, the costs.
Yeah, because that was a frightening place to drive on. Thank you, Dan.
Nothing's ever easy, is it? This is another one of those sticker shock ones. I remember sitting up here sometime last year, you're giving Lady Liberty a better place to stand on. And this one had some different numbers on it, but it did provide me some fun YouTube searches. I know that the project is, engineering wise, is it's quite a feat. Like I did not know what sheet piling was. And I honestly think that we owe it to that neighborhood, that road, Schweitzer, everybody to do the utmost for that. My, my question to you is, what would the lifespan of a significant repair like that be? Are we looking at?
I mean, you could easily get, expect 100 years out of that wall than more. I mean, that's.
Great investment then. Yeah. I'll be dead.
Any other questions? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. But entertain a motion to approve the resolution for North Boyer Road Embankment Emergency Declaration and Expenditures. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
They moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman.
Yes.
Councilman Darling.
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister.
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow.
Yes.
Councilman Groth.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule.
I'd like to thank Dan for a very thorough packet piece for us. Enjoyed the graphics. Yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned.